Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, August 20, 2018 at 5:00 PM. This is a regular meeting of the Oregon Village Board, which I would like to call to order and request roll call, please.
Peterson?
Here.
Staten?
Here.
Carpenter?
Bollig?
Here.
Boudreaux?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Thank you. Yeah, advise me on where to go here, because Mr. Slavny is fighting high water.
Yeah, Mike said, yeah, so, I think if Matt and Dennis are ready, we can do Ford Development. So, what, Matt? Matt, do you maybe want to come up to the table?
Sure.
Thank you. Looks like I'm running the meeting, Steve.
That's just fine. You can just take right over if you want to.
Steve's got a dog to walk, anyway. Be right back, right, Steve?
Yeah, about eight.
Yeah, about eight, maybe eight-thirty, yeah.
Okay, so we're at an item three, public appearances. Item B is where we start, right?
Yes.
And trustee Carpenter's in Ann Arbor. I told you she picked a night to leave when there's a whole bunch of stuff to read.
What do you need, Matt?
Okay, so I'm going to read what's on the agenda. The May 10th and July 12th, planning commission meetings, discussion of possible action, consideration of the Highlands of Netherwood. So for board members, it says, "A Capitol area regional planning commission recommend approval of the sewer extension for this area. Item one, review of park board's recommendation regarding parkland dedication fees from 5 to 2018. Park board's motion. Miller move, seconded by Knutson, to recommend to village board and planning commission the approval of allowing the developer to dedicate the proposed 6.097 acres of parkland in the development, and the developer must pay a fee in lieu of dedication of $52,070 or $0.55, whatever the fee is at the time of payment, in addition to the proposed public parkland. Motion carries six-zero." So there's no village board action required on this. This is covered in the annexation agreement, and that reminds me, I would like to welcome the park board meeting with us tonight on some items, so it's nice to have you here. So item two, possible action resolution number 18-26, approving the annexation agreement from the 5/10/2018 planning commission's motion. MAR move, seconded by Malzahn, to recommend to village board the approval of the direct annexation of land to the village of Oregon as presented in the packet for the proposed development of the Highlands of Netherwood. Motion carries six-zero. Village attorney recommends that annexation agreement be approved before adoption of annexation ordinance. So the recommended motion is to adopt resolution number 18-26, approving the annexation agreement.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So now we turn it over to Mr. Dregney. It looks like he's ready to roll.
I'm ready to roll. So you all should have a one-page summary of the annexation agreement in your packet. This is something you've seen before. The agreement is consistent with what you have seen before and what I've summarized for you before. Would the board like me to review it again, or do you feel that that's not necessary?
It's not necessary for me, Matt. I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, we had in our packet.
So we're simply here tonight, ready to approve it. I will note, one of the couple things that needed to happen before we could get to this point were that the developer needed to pay, make a substantial payment to pay this project's share of the Westside sanitary sewer interceptor fee. That's about a $223,000 item. We did receive a check for that today, and the developer needed to pay their stormwater fees, about $36,000. We received that payment today as well. So with those things in hand, we're able to go ahead and take action on this agreement.
Okay, thank you. So any questions or comments? So we have the motion second to adopt resolution number 18-26, approving the annexation agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item three, possible action, annexation ordinance, number 1806. From the plan commission, this comes as a motion from 5/10/2018. MAR move, seconded by Malzahn, to recommend to village board the approval of the direct annexation of land to the village of Oregon as presented in the packet for the proposed development of the Highlands of Netherwood. Motion carries six-zero. Possible first motion to consider, the board by a two-thirds vote may suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings at tonight's meeting. So do we have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
And for discussion, I think this has come up a couple times in the last couple of meetings. Matt, could you just explain why we sometimes choose to suspend the rules and waive the first and second reading?
Yeah, so the rule is that ordinances by rule need to be read at two meetings before they can be approved unless the board chooses to waive that rule and do two readings at one meeting. And the reason that you're sometimes asked to do that is for efficiency, really. Tonight, we have a number of items to act on. They all need to be addressed in sequence, and so for convenience, it will allow us to move on to the other things on the list if we can get the ordinance approving the annexation adopted. Otherwise, if we just did the first reading of that tonight, we'd have to then just hold off on everything else until the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Any further questions? We have the motion second then, to suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings at tonight's meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Our second motion. If the board chooses to suspend the rules, which we did, the board may consider adopting ordinance number 1806. So I bring that as a motion. Need a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four, possible action, resolution number 18-27, approving the final plat from the planning commission on 5/10/18. MAR move, seconded by Schnelly, to recommend to village board the approval of the Highlands of Netherwood final plat, meeting the recommendations from village engineers memo dated 5/3/2018. That carries six-zero. So the motion I bring is to adopt resolution number 18-27, conditionally approving the final plat. So need a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments needed here, Matt? Anybody?
The one thing that I was trying to follow, we had a discussion some time ago about the water flow, and I'm trying to find the map real quick in my packet here. Do you feel, has that been addressed? I'm guessing the planning commission had that conversation and made sure that that was all, all that feedback was put into the final plat?
You could drive out and check it out.
Yeah, right.
It's flowing.
I think Jeff's talking to Dennis about, this is Dennis from Ford Development.
Hi, Dennis.
I think you're talking about the concern about the water flowing potentially back onto the township's property up along Netherwood, and I think that's been addressed by the stormwater.
To the west, the parcel to the west?
I think it was in the northwest, originally in the northwest corner.
Yeah.
That water up there actually flows back towards our property, and the ponds were designed to go up there, will take the water from the neighbors and store that all for consecutive 100-year floods, basically. And then we had talked about potentially some ability to pump at some time, and that would be just a portable pump, and the problem is really, where are you going to pump it to, I think, out there, right? They could do it back into one of the storm sewers.
But I think that was the issue, was the water not flowing back onto the township's property or?
Right, yeah.
I think that's been addressed.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we have the motion second for resolution number 18-27, conditionally approving the final plat. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item five, review of proposed street names. Village planner Mike Slavny's reaction to proposed street names. He said, quote, "I think such names reflect the immigrant heritage of our country in a positive and educational light." Those names are Peterson Trail, Nell's Circle, Walter Street to replace Wally Street, Beddable Circle to replace Bergen Circle, Humble Circle to replace Oslo Circle, Denmark Circle to replace Arendelle Circle, Langland Street to replace Melmo Street, and Lindelsey Street to replace Stockholm Street. If I didn't pronounce those correctly, I stand corrected and apologize. Some of those are new names to me. Okay, so then we do item six.
Actually, Steve, for the record, the board should prove these.
Okay, yeah, I see that.
It's in that warranty deed that came with the property.
Okay, yeah, I see now it says possible action. So we need a motion on those street names.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item six, rezoning ordinance, number 18-07, rezoning all lots and outlots in Highlands of Netherwood plat, and the developer requested rezoning of lot one from MR8SR6. There's a whole number of them listed there. Do I have to read all those?
No.
Okay.
It's in the ordinance.
Okay. So the possible first motion, again, is to a two-thirds vote, suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings at tonight's meeting. So I'll bring that as a motion. Requesting a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second motion to consider, I'll bring this as a motion. If the board chooses to suspend the rules, the board may then consider adopting ordinance number 1807. So we need a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, possible action on resolution number 18-28, approval of master development agreement. Recommended motion is to adopt resolution number 1828, approving the master development agreement. I bring that as a motion. Request a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item eight, possible action regarding resolution number 18-36, approval of Phase 1A development agreement. The motion is to adopt resolution 18-36, Phase IA of the development agreement. That's a motion, please. We need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will now take a short recess to sign the agreements.
Do you know?
That's government moving quickly. It doesn't happen often, so.
Do you know when you finance on breaking ground for the first phase?
About two weeks, hopefully.
Yeah.
Early September.
When it dries out.
If it dries out, yeah.
So is the system design ready?
Matt, I thought we could maybe go into the back, the back table?
Yeah, that's fine. That'd be easier.
Matt, are you, Matt? Hey, Matt. Hey, Matt? I'm sorry. No, no.
Okay, we are back after signing those papers. We're still waiting for Mr. Slavny, our planner, to be here to talk about the civic campus plan. So we're going to do some kind of routine matters of business here, because if we start the park, we're sup, that's going to take a while, and I want Mike here at the middle to get things just joined. So I appreciate your patience. So I'm going to clear out item 10, which approval minutes are or none, so that's done. Item 11, discussion of possible action, paying development grant to Brad Willie for his Business Park project. There's a note from Mr. Grace. In 2016, the board agreed to provide a $75,000 grant to Brad Willie to build his new truck maintenance and repair facility in the Alpine Business Park. Brad moved into the facility at the end of July, meeting the grant's deadline. After deducting consulting fees from the original $75,000, the board has requested pay the balance of $71,875.63 to Brad Willie. If approved, this amount is included as part of tonight's voucher. So we need a motion to approve that, please?
I'll move that for discussion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I guess Lisa or Mike, is this going to in any way negatively affect the 2018 budget?
It's borrowed money.
It's borrowed money, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
It's a beautiful building.
Isn't it? Nice, yeah. Brad's a good guy. He'll take good care of things, so. So we have the motion second to approve paying the balance of $71,875.63 grant amount to Brad Willie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 12 is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight, amount of $1,63,166.36 for approvals. Need a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions?
Well, there usually are. Find them here.
Take your time.
I think I already know the answer to this one. It's 8045 from Nina Foundry, and it just says miscellaneous supplies for street improvements, but it's for $8,000?
Is it for the manhole?
That's, that's part of the, when we do the mill and overlay, we replace manholes and stuff that are old and leaky.
Okay.
And so, yeah, that's part of our street project.
All right, just seemed like a lot of money for miscellaneous.
Those 27 manhole castings.
Okay. The next question I have is from Pre-C construction, and this is related to the Perry Parkway project. $620,000, how, what percent of the project?
It's 50%.
50%?
Yep, the contract's 1.1 or 1.2 million.
Are we going to be above or below or right on?
We're projecting to be very close. We had a small amount of contingency in there, but castings and other stuff like that will add up, and some extra breaker run that had to go in because of the poor soils.
Looks real nice, even though it's not done.
Looks great. We just have a lot of people running through there. It's causing a lot of difficulties.
Who, who?
We got him on trail camera, don't worry.
Okay.
Five foot three, white hair.
I've grown, five-three.
Other questions? Any more, Jerry?
I'm done.
Okay, any other questions? So we have a motion second for vouchers, amount of $1,63,166.36. Roll call, please.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Staten?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Thanks, that motion carries. Item 13 is community input. Is there anyone in the community who would like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to item 14, proclamation and announcements, board comments.
I had a comment. I found a small article in the Oregon Observer that talked about the good work that Brian Yule and the police department did, peaceful resolving a two-day armed standoff, to the point where it didn't hit Channel 3000 or really pop up on anybody's radar, and I just thought that was just fantastic, and I wish Brian was here to take the lugs.
He's coming later.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else, board? Okay, staff comments, SB, item one.
We have our annual safety training, and it's going to take most of the afternoon on the 12th, so we're going to have to close the village hall. So we already, I don't know if you noticed, we already have a post to.
Yeah, I saw that. Item two?
Village residents are encouraged to contact Fiber Tech at 608-316-6185 when you have questions about TDS. Residents, always welcome to call the village hall, but if you really want to get directly to the, to the group that can help you with TDS questions, that's who you should call, please.
Thank you. And three notes at Jefferson Crossing Apartments. The ribbon cutting is Thursday, August 30th at 9:00 AM, and Jefferson Crossing is full. All 61 units are rented. So congratulations to them, and I know they've mentioned that Judy did a great job of referring people, so thank you. Item four gives the dates we've been seeing on a regular basis, and five has upcoming meetings. Please be sure to note those. Proceed from there. We may get to German before Mike hits here. Item 15, communication and miscellaneous business, discussion of possible action, installing fencing around the former motel property at 1053 Park Street. The village administrators note, "The police department has increased its patrol in the area, and Jeff, Rowan, and I do not feel it's necessary to fence the motel property, given the timeframe we're working with on this property." So I would agree with that, so unless we have a motion, we will proceed. Jeff, you okay with that?
Yeah, actually, I think that might have been my suggestion, and I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, they might burn it down or something if you brought people to get in there.
Item B, discussion of possible action. Capitol area regional planning commission, greater Madison vision survey. The recommended motion is to allow village staff to help promote CARPC's of greater Madison vision survey. From the April 2017 planning commission meeting, Steve Steinhoff, the deputy director, appeared for that item. He gave a visual PowerPoint titled "Greater Madison Vision." It's guided by CARPC seeks to establish a shared regional vision and plan for growth that generates tangible benefits to all communities. He mentioned Dane County is one of the fastest-growing counties around, and he said he mentioned experience shows how important it is to come together, develop, and implement a shared growth strategy. So we have the recommended motion, if you want to care to make that?
I'll make it.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I've been involved with this somewhat, and I think it's a good, a good thing to proceed with, so getting a lot of input as decisions are made. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C has been tabled, which is the Village of Oregon Emergency Management Plan. Item D, discussion of possible action, approval of school resource officer agreement. Wait on that one, Ray.
I think Brian wants to come here.
Yeah, he does.
Oh. Brian, that was good.
Okay, we will proceed then. Are you all set, chief? Okay, so item D, discussion of possible action, approval of school resource officer agreement. The Oregon School District and Village of Oregon Police Department for the 2018-19 school year. There's a village administrator's note. Mike has included the initial draft, sent the district information with second and third drafts of the agreement, and the agreement signed by the district in the packet for the board's review. Myself, Chief Yule, and Mike have recommended the board approve the agreement with the understanding the village and school district continue to work on the two outstanding issues, one of which is to install a weapons safe in the school resource officer's office and improve access to the district's video system for the school resource officer. The recommended motion is to approve the school resource officer agreement, Oregon School District and Village of Oregon Police Department for 2018-19 school year, with the understanding the district and village will continue to work on the outstanding issues. So we need that motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Chief, if you want to make some comments, it appears since you had a microphone?
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we're making progress on the school resource officer agreement. It's not quite where we want it to be yet. I know we talked a little bit in other sessions about some of the items that were, that we'd like to see in there, namely the gun safe and the access to the camera systems. We're still working out those kinks, but I think it's important for us as a village and for the school to have a school resource officer in place before the school year starts. And in order to do that, we need to have a signed agreement for that to happen, so this is the progress we're making, and again, hopefully, we can continue on that throughout the remainder of the year.
Are there questions?
No, I just want to thank you and Brian and, you know, all the parties that have been working hard to pull this together, because I think it's an important document, and it's exciting for me to see that you've gotten to the five-yard line, basically.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's nice to have this settled with school starting, so that's great. Good job.
We're not quite settled, but we're there. We're getting there.
Close, yeah.
I said five-yard line.
We have, we have the officers of the school.
So in Iowa, the five-yard line is the goal. That's why the confusion with Steve.
Well, since I'm from Iowa, no, that's not necessarily true.
Yeah, be careful. Chief is from Iowa, too, so.
That's what I said. I said I'm from Iowa, so that's not necessarily true.
But it's still funny, though. That's the thing.
Are there any questions or comments, Jeff, that are out of order? Okay, so we have the motion and second to approve the school resource officer agreement for the school year. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, chief, and again, thanks for your work on this.
You bet.
Okay, item E, review of submitted banking information and possible board action regarding selecting a new bank for the village.
So you will see that Lisa and I did not provide a recommendation, because we didn't actually know what the board wants to do with the banking. In the RFP that went out, there was a, there was a discussion of possibly having, interviewing the finalists, the banks, and so I guess, I think Lisa and I, we're sitting way in
And so I guess, I think Lisa and I, we're sitting way in the back of the room there.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, just what does the board want to do with this? We're comfortable giving you our top three choices, and then do you want to interview them, or do you want, do you want more information? Just, I guess, where do you wanna go with this process?
So I can say that I read through all of the responses to the RFP plan. I personally would not need to interview anybody.
Okay.
To me, it's more important that Lisa has a comfort level, since she's the one that's gonna be managing the relationship. So if, if Lisa is looking for advice and, and would want an interview to get to that place, I'd be happy to support her in that.
Okay.
But I personally wouldn't need that.
But you're a banker, we're not.
No, I would agree with Jeff's comments. I think that I put a lot of value on the staff's comfort with these vendors. And if they want to give the top three, and then we can pick someone from the top three. I know for myself, I, I would put weight on someone local, but I also put a lot of weight on just the dollars involved. So I know that after looking at these, we've got one vendor that is offering a much higher rate, so.
So what we could do, if Lisa agrees with this, is that for the next board meeting, I'll sit down with Lisa, and we'll make sure that we're in agreement on the top three. And then Matt's firm has prepared an agreement that the selected bank will have, well, will have to sign at some point. And so we could put that into the packet. The board wants to make the selection of the top, one of the top three and say condition on the bank signing the agreement. So we could do that the next meeting if you want.
Okay.
So I'm kind of in the camp with Jerry. I'm, I feel like we've, we've been working on this for a long time, and these different banks are, are excited and interested to know how they did.
Yep.
And I think if you brought the, well, you brought the facts forward in the packet today, I think really the banks all did a really good job of coming in and, and answering the questions.
Yep.
But there definitely is, there's a distinction, which is the rate that the banks are gonna pay, and it's not a small distinction. So I, I think we can resolve this this evening, unless you're not comfortable with that.
No, that's, that's great, Jeff.
So Jerry, maybe you had kind of had your finger on it, and I see you're looking at it in your packet. Did you wanna talk us through that?
Um, no, I mean, it's basically, they're all equal, except for location and dollars offered. Services are, are all together. I, I have no comment on the services and, and what is that?
Flash flood warning. Alarms are working.
Whoa, all right.
I got buzzed, yeah.
Just so you know, it's really wet.
Yeah, so. I don't know if we wanna allow, I see one of the vendors is here tonight. I don't know if we wanna allow comments from the vendor or not, but.
Up to the board? Well, they came down. I don't see the reason why we shouldn't give them an opportunity.
Yeah, let's see what questions we have.
Well, my only thought was, I'm not sure if they were here for that purpose and whether others were invited.
We didn't.
I'm not sure.
They didn't invite anybody.
That's not why they're here, I guess is my point. So, I mean, if they want to, but nobody else was invited.
So to get to, to get to the heart of it, there is a, there's a rate that banks will, will base the interest rate on for, for the accounts, right? And it's, it's the local government investment pool, right? The LGIP.
Yep.
And that runs up-down, but somewhere around one and a half percent right now. One point eight percent, something like that right now.
Lisa, can you come up here, please? She, she and I have talked about this. She's got, she's got the numbers, which you're looking for.
Yeah, and, and so one bank said, well, what we'll do is we'll give you that rate plus ten basis points, which is point one zero.
Yep.
Another bank said, we'll give you that rate plus point two six, which is twenty-six basis points, quarter of a percent on top of the LGIP. And the third bank came in and said, we'll give you a hundred and fifty-six basis points, one point five six percent on top of the LGIP. So all things being equal, if you were just looking at the return on the investment to the village, there's one bank that's willing to pay six times more than the next highest bank. And I think to Jerry's point, when you're talking about ten million dollars.
Fifteen?
Fifteen million dollars. That becomes a significant number really quickly.
So then, as a comparison with Chase, Lisa looked at this today. We have ten million dollars at, what was that, was it?
We have multiple accounts with JP Morgan, and our general check, our general account, general operating account has about ten million dollars in it. And for the month of July, the interest rate was one point four percent. And then the local government investment pool for the month of July was one point nine five percent. So when you add them together, you're up over, you're well over three percent on your money.
And, and we have one bank local that's gonna give us one point five six on top of the local.
One point four five. One point four five.
Oh.
On top of the local government.
Right.
Is JP Morgan giving us one point four on top of the LGIP?
No.
No, so it's just one point four.
Just one point four is what we get.
So we're talking about doubling the interest rate.
Yeah, we wanted to show you that if we picked the bank you're talking about, we're gonna do well with our investment income.
And, and I'm sorry, I, I was trying to follow the interest rate. Did you tell, did you say how much that equated to? One point four percent in interest earned for the month?
I, I didn't have the July statement. I didn't take time to look that up. Actually, I did know. So the July statement, the, so we have the general operating account, which is the average balance, because it's based on the average daily balance. So it was like ten million dollars was the average daily balance in the month of July. But that's because we had the big influx of our borrowed money that came in. So we had, it was, it equated to about twelve thousand dollars just on that account. And then we have about ten other smaller accounts, which are like money market accounts, but we're only getting point three eight percent on those accounts. And the balance on those ten accounts is about four point six million right now. So when you take what we're earning on these smaller accounts, it's like our impact fees, the money market accounts that we have, we're getting point three eight percent right now at JP Morgan. And we're gonna be getting over three percent on the other four point six million dollars that we're barely generating any interest income on right now.
So a hundred times more?
Yeah.
If, if the board picks that bank.
Right.
Lisa, were you able to ballpark the dollars on an annual basis at all?
Well, basically.
I know you, you'd have to go back to every month's.
Right. I mean, just looking at the month of, the month of June is the one that I wrote down, because the average daily balance was seven point four million dollars. And that equated to like eighty, eight thousand four hundred and seventy dollars.
For one month.
Basically, right, and that was at one point three five percent. So basically, if you double that and add a little bit, you're, it's, it's gonna be probably, over the course of the year, probably on the average, about eight thousand dollars a month. So that is pretty significant then over a twelve-month period.
It's like ninety-six thousand dollars a year.
Right. That's, yeah.
So, I mean, it's hard for me to walk away from that number and say that, because again, looking at all of the different banks' responses, they, to Jerry's point, they were just, they were kind of neck and neck. They offer the same products, they offer the same services, they offer the local banking, which is one of the things that I was looking for, to do business with a bank that is in the community, paying taxes in the community. And the one difference is, is that there's one bank that stands out in terms of return on investment.
And we're sure that's not a typo. They confirmed that, right?
Well, I'd ask Lisa to confirm that.
That's what their RFP said.
And then Matt is gonna have a document for them to sign, which is gonna tighten up the fact that it's a three-year commitment with two three-year options. And just to make sure that everything that they're saying that they're providing us, they're gonna be delivering to us.
Yes, we have a, an agreement drafted, ready to go. If the board authorizes staff to move forward with one of the, one of the banks, we will move forward with that agreement and review it with them, make sure they're prepared to sign it.
So I'll say the one, you know, the one thing about this process that's always difficult is that you get a lot of community banks involved in the RFP. And several banks that are in our community, and it's hard to pick one. The good news, though, is that it's not a forever contract. It's a three-year contract. And we have the option to extend after three years, but we're not committed to extending after three years. We could go back out to RFP. So I think this puts the village in a favorable position. And at this point, I would recommend that we would award the contract to Union Bank and Trust based on the, the interest earnings that they're gonna offer us.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
And I'll second that for discussion. And this discussion I had in mind was, I see that there is a vendor here tonight. And I, if they have some comments they'd like to make, I think, I mean, they weren't invited, so I assume that.
Jerry, no, Jerry, I'm gonna just, I'm not trying to be rude here to them or to you. We didn't invite anybody. We would, we would invite all the banks. They're, they come, they came here because they knew it was on the agenda, so.
Right.
Just for the record. Because I don't want, I don't want the other banks to think that we invited them.
I guess I didn't make that clear.
I just wanna make sure they don't, other banks will get upset at us, so.
For those who don't know me, I'm Dan Behrend. I'm the executive vice president and CFO of Oregon Community Bank. And I've been a village resident for the past thirty-two years. And first of all, as a community banker here in Oregon, we're very appreciative of the opportunity to have been able to submit a bid for the RFP. But also, as a village resident, I have to say that if you don't take that high rate, you're being very foolish. We don't like coming in second. Our bid is second. But that rate is just something that you can't pass out for all the reasons which you've already said.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, that was very generous, Dan. Thank you. And like Jeff said, you know, you've got three local banks, it's hard, but we have to pick one, so we appreciate your comments and the fact you submitted a good, a good plan. Anything else? So we have motion second to.
Oh, Jerry Bollocks.
I did.
Yeah, yeah. We have a motion second for Union Bank and Trust Company as a village bank. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item F, twenty eighteen net new construction amount, twenty-nine million, five hundred ninety-four thousand, nine hundred dollars compared to thirty-two million, six hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars in twenty-seventeen. So a three-million-dollar difference.
You're still waiting to get the net new construction amount from the state?
Yeah.
It should be coming within two weeks.
Okay. Okay, item G, outdoor, outdoor burning restricted regulations. That is tabled until September seventeenth committee meeting.
Actually, I'm sorry, that's, yeah, it's gonna go to committee. It's gonna come to the board on the seventeenth.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that, no, I have it wrong on the agenda.
And I do want to encourage people from the village to come out and express how they feel about the outdoor burning restrictions in the same way that I encourage people from the village to get involved in everything that we're doing. The one, the one caveat, I guess, is not the right word, but it's close, is that a lot of times when people come to the village, and we had some letters addressed to us in our packet, they're coming to the village from their perspective in terms of how this is going to impact them personally. Those are important things for us to hear. But when I, when I convert that information to my recommendation to the board, I have to also take into consideration the other nine thousand, six hundred and ninety people, ninety-nine people that aren't in the room and what's in their best interest. So as I'm talking to the community and inviting them to come out, I would just simply ask them to think about both sides of the equation. A, yes, it's gonna impact you individually, but B, there's a large community that the ordinance are designed to serve that extends beyond your neighborhood or even your home.
Thanks, Jeff.
So I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be at that meeting, and, and my, my hope is that it doesn't become a very long meeting with individuals that have individual concerns, but they can't see the broader impact of the ordinance.
Okay, we'll get some more things done here. Reported committees, there are none, so sixteen is done, seventeen, and it's not requiring action. Item A, cable TV committee meetings from April third and June twenty-eighth of two thousand eighteen, and library board meeting from July eleventh, two thousand eighteen. Those are online if people who are watching wish to see those. Item eighteen, unfinished business. There is none. I just chuckle at that, 'cause it seems like there's always a lot. New business is approval of licenses, and there are none before us tonight to deal with. And then that takes us back.
Yeah, I think we're on the things to do.
Have you heard from Mike?
No, I haven't, no. Let me check my phone here.
So we do the park board stuff, then?
I, I think, I think they don't mind if Mike shows up.
Yeah.
Take a break here and add.
Okay, so we're back to item three, public appearance, I think. Where are we on that?
It's section number four, Steve. I'm page three.
So item four comes to the park board. They join me to the park board, so I'll turn this over to the park board for roll call.
Okay, I'll call a park board meeting to order, and we'll begin with the roll call, please.
President.
Knutson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Jamison?
Here.
Stromanger?
Here.
Please?
Me.
Peterson?
Here.
And I'm sorry, are you, I'm not sure which student number you.
Site?
Site?
Thank you.
I noticed a new member on there. Sorry, I thought you were gone, sorry.
This is my last.
It is, okay, all right. Sorry about that.
Okay, so that takes us to item five. And that is listed as discussion possible action on J.C. Park West Concept Plan. Item A, adopted resolution from eighteen oh nine included in the packet for reference. So that's in the packet for all of us. Item B, fundraising update, including level villages' participation in the effort.
I think, I think Lisa and I just wanted the board to realize that as much as when Matt drafted the, the resolution, Steve, you just referred to that we were gonna be separate from the fundraising, it, it's impossible. It's a village park. You know, we have the accounts set up at UBT under the village's name. Lisa's handling the money. I just wanted the board and park board just to know that we couldn't just completely remove ourselves from the fundraising efforts. I mean, they're, Judy and Tiffany and Lisa are doing, and Jamie are doing most of the fundraising, but I just wanted to make sure the board knew that.
Okay, thank you.
But we're looking for help.
Is, was that gonna be the it for the fundraising update, or, or do we have any sort of numbers yet?
Well, we, we don't, no.
Well, in the, in the J.C. Park West, you have this here.
Yes.
If you look, that we are trying to get the five hundred thousand, but we still have four hundred and eighty-six thousand to go. And we did have a kickoff at.
Headquarters.
Headquarters and paid some money there, and then we are doing these things. But we're hoping all the other, like, all the other clubs get involved also. We are working with rugby. We're working with lacrosse. And then also, right now, baseball. So we're hoping all the other people jump in and, and start helping us raise money so that we can get this moving and, and they can do whatever they wish to fundraise, or if they wanna, we open it up to come and talk with us, and we'd be glad to help them.
There's, there are people waiting to provide money for the fundraising, but that's why we have to get the, one of the items on here, adopted, the naming rights.
Oh, okay.
That's sort of holding things back somewhat at this point.
Okay, and, and when you talk about working with groups, I'm just trying to clarify, are you looking for monetary donations directly from those clubs? Or are you looking for them to say, we're gonna hold a fundraising event?
Either or. We'll take both.
Anything they're willing to give?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Not in that cold cash, Mark.
So I'm very interested, to piggyback on your question, trying to think about this project and now go, and now go backwards in my mind a little bit. And reading the memo from, from Matt with regards to in-kind donations and knowing how important in-kind donations can be to the success of a project like this, but also knowing how in-kind donations, when, when run through the government, can, can kind of handcuff the government at points or even make it impossible. I'd be interested in having a conversation about how we could somehow enter an agreement where we assign, basically, assign the project to an entity, a nonprofit entity, or, or a for-profit entity. Nonprofit would make sense, because it would allow for donations that could be tax deductible, perhaps. I'm not an accountant. But that, that at a later date then, that that entity would either gift the project back to the village or that the village would essentially enter into a land lease with that nonprofit entity that could include the maintenance of the park fields so that it didn't fall necess- so that it didn't fall necessarily into the village's park system. Per se, I'm just teeing it up.
Yep.
Um, and we hadn't really had that conversation where, you know, how could that work, like, similar to the youth center or the food pantry?
We actually did, no offense.
Oh, we did, no offense, none taken. Um, was I here?
I think so.
What did I think of it?
Well.
It's a terrible idea. Really bad.
No, no, we, we.
I was dead set against it.
You said you'd go along with it. We, uh, we were going through and looking at the different options and, and we, we kind of, and I don't have my file with me. We kind of went through, looked at a couple of different options, was we were trying to figure a way of doing what you're just saying.
Yeah.
You know, like, how do we get, we, we're the, you know, we have to deal with the public bidding law and, and at the end of the process, we just felt, we just had us, have it remain as a village park. I, I could try to dig up my information if I look at it again, but it was, it was on a board. Actually, I think it was on the agenda that when we adopted this resolution, I think it was on the same, same meeting, but I, I could look that up for you.
I think it was some of the teams also did not want to, um, sign into the.
It, it was, it was complicated.
Yeah.
And, and I, I let Matt talk about, about the public bidding law, which is complicated even with this new, with this new, uh, new law that we're gonna talk about. Um, but we did, we did go through that analysis.
Okay, so we're past it.
Well.
So that's fine.
Yeah.
So now we're talking about the bidding law and the fact that we're gonna retain this park and how can we possibly use the public bidding law? Sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say before we move on to that, because that's another item on here, I was just gonna, back, we're still on the fundraising update. Um, I was just wondering if there was a, um, because I'm coming, I'm coming late to the game because I wasn't here for the earlier decisions made on J.C. Park, but I'm wondering, um, the, has, was there any sort of fundraising feasibility kind of study done for what anybody, I didn't know if that's.
We don't, we don't wanna waste the money and we don't wanna waste the time. We wanna move on and see if we can get the money. We can do it. We're positive about this. It can happen.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. That was it. We already have pickleball gentlemen's out there and out there. Their teams are really working to get it going. I mean, we, I have a lot of feelers out there and we're looking for actually the money to be, um, assigned. If you, I don't know if you got one of these slips or anything, but we've talked about how much money would it cost to have a, a field in your name and things, naming rights and stuff like that. So I got quite a few people waiting to find these amounts out, and I think we can do it.
Can we discuss this? Are we at that point?
We will be, but sooner or later.
Um, well, we are at fundraising, so.
Yep. So I, I like the concept, I like the idea. I'm not a fan of forever, um, so I'd like to talk about that.
That, that part, yeah, maybe you wanna hold that till we get down to the sponsorship, if you're gonna wait for that.
Oh, yes, number seven.
I didn't know what Judy was holding up there, sorry.
Yeah, that's on number seven, I think.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna come back to item C, review of village attorney's memo regarding public bidding law and donated materials and labor. So Matt, you're on, please.
Yeah, um, so I think the, the key takeaways with respect to that memo are that, um, we, if there are opportunities to use donated labor and materials, in-kind contributions, those are gonna have to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis to determine whether there's a way to take advantage of that and how that would work with the overall construction plans for the project and, and the public bidding laws. So it is a little complicated, that's true, um, and it may mean that in some cases we're able to take advantage of those things and in other cases we're not. Um, as of today, I'm not aware of any specific in-kind contributions that we have to evaluate. So my suggestion would be, let's wait and see, um, how that unfolds and then determine whether we're able to take advantage of them. To your point, Jeff, um, yeah, we did look at possibly structuring this as more of a private project, with public bidding as one of the issues on the table, um, but at least as of today, we're, we're not, we're not approaching it that way. We're looking at this as a village-owned park. It will be a village construction project. And there, there really isn't a way around that unless we're willing to say, no, let's turn this in, let's make this more of a private operation. So I think we, we did get past that. So if you have any questions about the public bidding issues, I'd be happy to address them, but I, I actually think it's almost premature. Until we have a real live in-kind contribution to talk about, the analysis is a little too abstract right now.
And we are asking people, we, I have some people that are interested in, um, they do bricklaying and they come in and do that. But again, we told them that they would have to go through Matt and, and, you know, your procedure and things like that, so they understand totally. So we're just taking names down right now for any of that stuff, for any donations or stuff, but we have nothing, concrete or anything, because if we do get into something that, you know, is easy to work with, we may, we may want them.
And just to clarify the, any, if someone steps up and has an in-kind donation, the amount of that donation does not count towards the five hundred thousand dollars needed to trigger.
Correct.
A million dollars. Do you need cash?
We want full cash.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
But the in-kind could help complete the project if we had a series of them.
Right.
And again, I, I, it'll depend on what it is in terms of whether it's really workable or not.
If it's cement or tar or.
Or labor.
Or labor, sure, sure. Because we're gonna need a lot of labor.
Yeah, well, and I think labor gets difficult because the reality is we're probably gonna have to go out and publicly bid this, and so.
David's bacon, that comes into play.
Well, I'm not sure how you publicly bid a project and including your bid package, oh, hey contractors, if you want, you can, you can take advantage of these opportunities to do work on a volunteer basis. Then contractors are gonna have to figure out, how do I, how do I do that? And what does that mean? And is it even possible from, from their standpoint as a contractor to say, oh, yeah?
How do you even allow them to do that though with David's bacon?
I don't know. Uh, that's why I say I think we need to wait and see what we get. Another example, I think I, I don't know if I even, did I give an example of donating material and how that might, you know, somebody offers, for example, to donate.
Contractors may incorporate donating materials and labor in their bids, yep.
Yeah, so I think material might be easier. Let's say someone who supplies bricks, for example, says, I'm willing to donate bricks. Or I'm willing to offer bricks at half my normal price. Um, if we get a commitment like that, I don't see a reason why we couldn't include in our bid package, uh, that information and allow contractors to choose to include that material supplier or not in their bid. They'd have to contact a material supplier and say, are you willing to provide bricks to me through my bid at this price? And if they say yes, I don't see, I, I don't see a problem with that. But it's, it's a little more complicated, obviously, than what we're used to seeing in public construction contracts. And I've never seen it done. If someone were to say, I volunteer to build the concession stand entirely, well, then we might be able to carve that out and have that as a separate project and say, that's gonna be done by this group of volunteers. And that could be done if we could segregate something from the rest of the project and, and say that's a separate.
Could, uh, Eagle Scout projects be part of that too?
Potentially, again, I think we have to see what they are and then figure out how it fits into the construction. Is it something that can be separated and said, that's a, that's a standalone thing, standalone project? Like, uh, there's some bridges I think we have to build across the drainage well. Somebody says, I volunteer to, you know, build that bridge. These are pedestrian little, pedestrian bridges. We might be able to say, let's, let's not include that in our bid package. Let's have that done by this group of volunteers who have offered to do it. Now we're gonna have to be comfortable that we're comfortable with that group of volunteers building our bridge and that it's gonna be done to our spacks.
Often contractors are pretty uneasy about that because they don't know what to say that bridge is done to the same standard the village wants. Uh, likewise, bricks vary a lot, believe it or not, and a contractor says, I'm not gonna bid on somebody else's materials. That materials may not be appropriate. And the concession stand, it's like, well, we got everything but the roof, so who's gonna put the roof on? It's like, well, I'm not gonna put a roof on somebody else's building. So to your point, there's a reason why it hasn't been done before, and I know you'd lose contractors to say, I don't, I don't care if it's just concrete work, I, I, I'm not gonna put a foundation on, on somebody else's foundation, I don't trust it.
Yep, you're right. Other comments on item five C? Questions? Park board, any comments or questions additional? Okay, so we'll go down to item D, review revised concept plan, which includes a pickleball court. And you can see on your screen, that's in the upper right-hand corner in blue, there are twelve pickleball courts. You go past the tennis courts on Oak Street on Tuesday and Thursday night, there's a lot of people down there playing pickleball and there's more during the day now, too.
The ladies are playing every morning at eight o'clock.
Go down on their own, yeah. So it's, it's a growing activity.
I have a, a question about that. Um, so how did that change from a U-ten soccer field to the pickleball courts?
The, the pickleball individuals approached us.
Picketed.
They picketed, yes, thank you.
Sorry.
And they, they asked us for it and we put in, we asked Rutler to adjust the concept plan and it's in front of you to consider it tonight.
Okay, um, how does the soccer club feel about losing a U-ten field?
We're trying to make everybody, um, enjoy the park. And it was, it was, I think in, in hindsight, was a group that we probably should have thought of sooner when we were meeting with organizations.
And you know, it also then it covers all ages. You know, the pickleball court, anybody that, any of any age can play.
Yeah, for the record, I'm not against pickleball. I'm just trying to understand how the process worked.
I mean, I mean, truly in hindsight, when we were inviting organizations to our staff meetings, I, I should have thought of the, the pickleball. I should have, you know, so when they approached us, it, it made sense to add them into the concept plan. I, I thought it did.
Yeah, I think it does too.
Yep.
It makes the park more diverse and more usable by more people and more supportive, I would guess.
Well, I, I just wanna make sure too that, you know, groups like, uh, you know, soccer, for example, are actually making out ahead in this project and that, you know.
They are, they're getting more fields and drainage fields.
I mean, improvement, sure, definitely. I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. And if we, you know, if we add too many, then it, then it narrows it down again and nobody's coming out ahead, you know, but it's.
I think the key is, is the, is just the fields will be in better shape. Like even after maybe not this rain event, but a normal rain event, they're just gonna drain better once they're reconstructed.
And also it's going to bring out, because pickleball people wanna have, um, tournaments too, as well as the other, uh, soccer and baseball and all those. Um, it's gonna bring a lot of people to town. It's gonna help our businesses.
Question? Uh, a pickleball requires lighting, and I know there's directional lighting included in this plan. At one point, there's concerns about, uh, lighting in this area. Um, I'm not really fully aware of what directional lighting, how effective it is, but.
We, we talked to, we did talk to Rutler about that because it's, it borders the single-family homes there. So they, they're convinced that they can put this kind of light, this type of lighting up and it's not gonna affect the neighborhood.
Can somebody explain to me what, what directional lighting is or?
You know, like when you go up and look at the lighting on, on, on Oak Street now for the tennis court, it's, it's a big light. It lights up half the block.
Right.
Exaggerating. This is more directional. It won't splash into the neighborhood.
More focused, okay.
Yeah, it's kinda controlled, you're right.
Mike, Mike, what's the term you always use?
Dark sky?
Dark sky. Yep, and cut off, yeah, yep.
Okay, but the soccer fields are not gonna be lit up at this point?
At, at this point.
It's a different phase, I think, right? Isn't the soccer and baseball field lights a different phase?
Yes, yep.
But there's, I mean, it's in there in a phase, though, that it would be lit up to extend the use of the field.
I think our goal right now is to get the fields in. If, if the, if there's enough funding to put lights up, you know, that may, that may even be a phase four, depending on how, how the money comes in. And we have, and we have to go out for bid and maybe, you know, if the bids are high, that may be something. So the idea is to get the fields in and get, and get better drain fields out there.
Amanda, a great example of how the lighting differs from today, if you look at like a, a, an older football field and everything, you can see the lighting from a long ways away. If you go by the new, we, they call it J.C. Park East, you know, over there with the high school put in, that's all much more modern lighting. I've been even impressed, but those are sixty-foot towers over there. And you go just a little bit outside the boundary of that park and it's, you know, surprisingly dark compared to, uh, you know, what mod, what old-time lighting would have been, so. And those are sixty-foot towers. With pickleball, you would only need probably twenty-foot towers or twenty-five foot towers or something, normal, you know, light standards.
I, I mean, but I will say that, um, if they raise the money and they get, they have the money to put the lighting in, that'll happen. But on the other fields, I mean, the lighting's gonna be, the, the goal is to get the fields built. And it's, it happens in other places where the, the lighting maybe has to be another fundraising possibility. But the, the idea would be to have lighting so you could use a building to claw off and that sort of.
Other questions or suggestions on the concept plan? Park board, anything, is there other input on the concept plan? So I'm thinking that you're happy with what you're seeing before you and.
Very much so.
Okay, good.
Thanks for the work that you put into it.
Item E, review of revised cost estimates, so this'll come back to the park board. It's item five E.
Item five E, the review of revised cost estimates. And that was done by Rutler. There was a series of, uh, interaction emails back and forth. And it looks like, so they've broken it down by, by phases. And then I think was it the additional handout that shows, uh, at least for phase one?
This, this is strictly for the, um, that's really item seven.
Oh, okay, okay, I guess.
So what they did was, I don't know if you saw the, the email, I mean, Rutler, they decided to, I think, just look at the numbers again because they're, they're using actual bidding documents. So that, that increased it, but it also obviously adding a hard surface to phase three is a lot more expensive.
So will we be needing to, uh, make a motion to approve this?
I think we're asking to have both boards approve the, the revised concept plan so that we, we know that both the park board and the village board are on, uh, on board, as we, as we start doing the fundraising and start doing the planning.
Yeah, yeah. So you would need a motion second for the revised concept plan?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll make that motion. I'll make the motion to, uh, approve the revised concept plan for J.C. Park West.
And I'll second.
Um, all, any, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Then that goes back to village board, so we need a motion to approve the revised concept plan?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item six, discussion of village attorney regarding park impact fee and land dedication policy needs assessment.
So Steve, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Mike, how, when is your next meeting? Seven, so, um. I wonder if we could do this, could we go back and do the civic campus?
Yeah, the next one could take a while, yeah.
Yeah, because then Mike does wanna stay for six, but I think we need to get the civic campus plan done, so if you don't mind.
Is that okay, park board? You're enjoying yourself so much, it's all right.
He's staying dry, Steve.
Okay, let me get back to where we are here. Okay, so we're back to item three, uh, public appearance. Uh, A from August second, two thousand eighteen, planning commission meeting. Uh, overview of revised civic campus master plan by village planner Mike Slavny, including public and written comments and possible action via the village board. So, Mike, you are on.
Well, we have a draft final plan document in front of you. Uh, near the end of the process, we had quite a bit of active public input and we have documented all of that input in the appendices to the plan. I think most importantly, at the end of the process, uh, we, uh, heard from the community band members and, uh, learned a little bit about the history of, of the Triangle Park that I was ignorant of, uh, before. And, um, learned that there was significant opposition to expanding Village Hall into the Triangle Park itself. Uh, the other thing that came up at the end of the process was interest in looking at the, the senior center uh, as a potential indoor year-round community activity space. So expand the active portion of the senior center to make it large enough to accommodate all ages, uh, particularly through the winter months, and that received very strong. And that received very strong support at the end of the process. So we've updated the document. This is meant to be a compendium of ideas rather than firm recommendations for any particular facility configuration. And so what we have in front of you is that full compendium and a recommendation that, as opportunities present themselves for additional public space in the downtown area, we need to keep our eyes and ears open for those opportunities if properties come for sale. I think if we don't, in the long run, we'll need to relocate one or more municipal facilities outside of the downtown area. That'll probably be a decision for a future board, but you never know when those opportunities may arise. And we know that there's strong community support for keeping everything downtown, but we are short on space, and we need to keep our eyes open for possibilities.
So along those lines, I brought this up before. It wasn't really received very well, but we were looking at some other things we could do with Village Hall, which now looks like maybe that isn't going to be the best way for us to move forward. So I'm going to come back to it. And that is to say that the library believes that they need 35,000 square feet. If they're going to build an 80-year building with a 20-year interior, that was my understanding, 35,000 square feet. But the library doesn't necessarily have a use for 35,000 square feet today. The village's population hasn't gotten there yet. So I had this thought that I shared with Mike that might not work, and it might not be a good idea, but the village is in dire need of updated office space. They're bursting at the seams, and now we're talking about adding a park department, which is another department on top of the overcrowding that we already have. And that was to have the village lease the second floor of a 35,000-square-foot building that the library would occupy the first floor of, which would get the village out of this building and give us an opportunity to temporarily, if not for the next five years or so, waiting for land to open up elsewhere, house ourselves in an area that would meet our needs right now, which my understanding was about 15,000 square feet today.
Right, right. I think that's an example of the kind of creativity that will be needed. The other alternative is to do the same kind of thing, but with the senior center temporarily occupying second-floor space at the new library, if the priority is to do that facility first.
So could you reconfigure senior center space into residential space down the road?
Yes, there's definitely an opportunity for a multi-story building on the current senior center site, which has the best soil conditions in the immediate downtown area. So we could go up as many as four floors at that location and accommodate upper-story senior residential apartment units in that building.
So you could put Village Hall on the ground floor, senior center on the second floor, and then affordable housing, senior housing on the third and the fourth floor. And then at the point where the Village Hall could move into its self-standing building, you could reconfigure that first, or you could move senior center down and reconfigure the second floor into affordable rental units or.
More senior center, right. The other opportunity is if the library moves first, we have that space available for first-floor occupancy also. And in fact, that might be the best place for a one-story addition, but with a lot of ceiling height for an active indoor space. So there are a lot of configuration possibilities, and it'll be, you know, what are the priorities and what are the resources that you have at hand?
That's very interesting.
Would we have to amend this report that you've prepared? Nice job, by the way, that I incorporated a lot. But would we have to come back and amend this plan if we did something outside of it in the future?
No, you already have a lot of plans that you do have to amend as time unwinds. And because there are so many possibilities, I felt the better tactic was to compile the results of the different alternatives that we explored and avoid making any firm recommendations about a particular sequence or particular configurations of buildings and in fact, not make a recommendation about the location of Village Hall in the future. So this is meant to be a resource rather than a plan that is meant to be followed. I wanted to give this board and future versions of this board the ability to be light on its feet. For example, if a property acquisition opportunity came up, you may have a matter of weeks, whereas amending a plan could take half a year. And that just didn't seem to fit with the idea of being able to pounce on a great opportunity if it arises.
So do we have a motion for this? Do I have to make a motion to approve it?
It's actually done by number three under the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, we're getting there shortly. Yeah, are there other questions or comments on Mr. Slavny's report? And again, like as Ben said, we appreciate the time that's been put into this and the work that's gone into it. It's been going since 2015, I think, right?
Many of my staff feel very good about the document and appreciate the chance to work on it.
Good, good. So item two, is review of written comments. Are there any things there that anyone would like to highlight or have questions about?
Just want to say thank you for reaching out and sharing your opinion. It's very important.
And if you go onto page 25 of the report, after the Plan Commission Meeting, Mike didn't want the plan to come to the board that very next board meeting because he wanted to incorporate these comments, most of his comments in there. So it's on page 25 if people are looking at the plan.
Okay.
We summarize those in those bullet points.
Okay, that takes us to item three, resolution number 18-33, adoption of the 2018 Village of Oregon Civic Campus Master Plan. Recommended motion is to adopt that resolution. So we need that motion, please.
I'll move that.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments from anyone? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Now we're back to six.
How are you keeping track of this tonight?
I'm not.
We're going to round items to talk about it next to the hearing.
So we're now on item six, right, Mike?
Yep, that's right.
Okay, so Park Board needs to wake up again because we're back to joint meeting.
Okay, so we had a discussion with Village Attorney.
So before we go on, I have to comment. I've almost done this a couple of times, but when we had Mr. Slavny step forward, I did see the high school student looked like, oh, no, not more of this stuff to listen to. So I understand.
It's in celebration of your last meeting.
You get everything, Eva, so. Yeah, well, we appreciate your long-term involvement. It's been great. Okay, so item six, discussion of Village Attorney on Park Impact Fee and Land Dedication Policy Needs Assessment. So.
Laura's here. Laura is our impact fee and naming rights expert, right, Laura?
Thank you.
Laura works in that.
Right.
Yeah, I'm Laura Catlin, for those of you who don't know me. By way of background, earlier this year, the board adopted a parks plan that inventoried the existing park system and then made some projections about future population growth and recommended that the village develop 13.4 acres of parks to continue to provide park service at the current level. Excuse me. So in light of the information that came from Mike's group and is set forth in the parks plan, Mike Ray has asked us to evaluate some mechanisms to fund those park improvements over the next few years until 2028. The parks involve two major cost components, land and improvements for shelters and playgrounds and grading. Currently, the village utilizes two funding mechanisms for the acquisition of parkland, and those are found in its land division ordinance, namely land dedication requirements and fee-in-lieu of dedication requirements. Those funding mechanisms only apply to the acquisition of land, so they don't help with funding the cost of making improvements to parkland. And they only apply when land is being divided. So it doesn't, those funding mechanisms don't capture all the types of residential development that create demand for park services. So Mike asked us to look at a combination of land dedication, fee in lieu, and impact fees to support a successful park system in accordance with law and the recommendations coming from your park plan. So we did, and the result is a parks needs assessment, which is a document that's a creature of the state legislature that is needed to support, in this case, both an amendment to your land division ordinance and to adopt a new park impact fee. So we prepared that document. It has yet to be finalized, but we're very close to finalizing the document. And what that document does is give the village the tools it needs to fund these improvements over the next 10 years. The other thing that I've, and I think you haven't made this available, Mike.
I, they haven't.
Oh, they, okay. So the.
I made sure they knew it's the first draft.
Okay. So the key takeaway on the needs assessment is that there are these four valuable funding mechanisms that are at your, that are available for you to use. You're using two already. Our recommendation is that we revise those consistent with the law and that the village adopt new park improved, park impact fees. One for funding improvements and one for capturing the cost of land that we're not capturing with the land division ordinance tools. The result is a parkland acquisition fee, which is about $1,600, and the other impact fee is a park improvement fee, which is about $1,000. And I've also provided, and hopefully it's before you, a chart showing current residential impact fees in the village and then what we project for later this year, early 2019. In the first, the first table, you see the current fees, the total about $2,900. Two of those fees are dropping off in September. Those are for police and public works. And then the idea is that these new park impact fees would come online after those other fees dropped out. So the big thing to remember about the park impact fees is that the park improvement fee applies to whenever someone applies for a building permit. The park acquisition impact fee only applies where the village has not previously collected a land dedication or a fee in lieu. So that, it all works in harmony so that the village isn't collecting a double fee. But basically, what we're doing with this system is capturing all developments that play a role in creating demand for park services and imposing fees to pay for both acquisition, for both land and improvements.
Mike's got a comment, Steve.
So as you know, I work in a good number of municipalities. And right now, the village is, has some loopholes in its current fee collection system. An example would be if someone got a hold of a large property in the downtown area and turned it into, say, like 60 apartments. There's no land division associated with that, but additional dwelling units are being created. And that's a loophole in our current system because it only addresses things when there's a land division. And a similar loophole relates to the park improvement. Almost all of Dane County communities have a park improvement fee. I think the Village of Dane is the one exception that I can think of. And we just saw a really good example of how much park improvements cost with the J.C. Park West example. And new residents, you know, create the demand for those park facilities. And the improvement fee is a way for those new residents to pay a fee that's basically calculated to represent the investment in the current park system that village taxpayers have been funding for many years. So I think that the fees that Laura has worked on here really get us up to a fair, across-the-board kind of system for all new residential units, whether they're part of a subdivision or part of an infill situation. And it gives us a mechanism to not only acquire land, but to get facilities developed on this land.
So Mike, do you think, looking at those projected fee changes, it goes to $5,500 for a new dwelling unit? Do you know how that stands in Dane County? Is that similar or?
In my experience, that's somewhere around the middle.
Okay.
So Steve, Lisa and I were talking about this morning, that, you know, there's that fine line that we don't have too many fees where we make it a problem or.
Yeah.
So one of my suggestions is that, I was going to ask Candy maybe to do this, or somebody, just to do a survey of Fitchburg and Middleton, and, you know, to see where we, if we would adopt this, where would we stand?
Yeah, that's kind of my question.
Because it's not, and what Laura did was she has the, these are impact fees. We also have a sewer connection fee of $2,500, right, Lisa? So I'm going to add $2,500 onto this.
Yeah, okay.
And so I just think that we just need to be, I'm not saying we shouldn't be raising money for parks and the library, but we just got to make sure we don't cross over that where it's actually a problem for people to build here. Because we get, we get more value out of people building homes here and increasing ourselves' value than getting out of impact fees.
Yeah.
So, and I know we're not going to take any action on this tonight. The board's going to give us some direction, but my thought is it has to be refined a little bit. Laura has to work a little bit more like Slavny and his staff. But in the meantime, I'd like to do a survey, just see if we did this, where we would stack up to the other communities, and then we bring it back.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Because then, as it's shown on here, so we're going to go through, and I know this is not to the Park Board, but we're going to enact a new library fee, update the current fee. But then when the library, the new library is built, there's going to be another fee. So, you know, we're going to have to take that into consideration. And at some point, Lisa and I were talking about today, are we going to have another impact fee for a new police department or police department? And we have to sort of make sure that we're not pricing ourselves out of the development market, so.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to know where we stand with similar type of communities, so, okay.
Question, I noticed that.
Question, I, I noticed that the, on the new impact fee schedule for late 2018, there's nothing for police on there. It's, it's in our current one.
The police and public works, those debt, that debt service expires. So, so we can't keep collecting impact fees.
So we won't be collecting.
Correct.
Okay, so, okay. And so right now, we, whenever a developer comes in and builds, starts a development, they pay developers' fees. Will those go away? Are these being replaced by any of, like, the parkland acquisition and the park improvements?
So right now, there is a, there, there is no park improvement fund. There is a, so we, like we did Highlands and Netherwood. We determined that they annex so much property, they're going to develop so much property, they need to dedicate, say, 10 acres to the village. And they're, they're actually dedicating 6.075, I think. So, so they have to then make up that difference with a current fee we have in place. This would replace that fee.
This would replace it, okay.
It, it would replace the parkland acquisition fee.
All right.
Right. The one that's up there.
All right.
Yeah. Well, Mike was trying to, Mike was trying to explain for many years, he's been trying to get us to do an improvement, park improvement fee as well.
Right, so I, I know you were, these fees are considerably higher than current developers pay, than someone building a home would pay. And I can see why, but the parkland acquisition and the park improvement amount is something they're already paying, but just in a different mechanism.
Well, they're not, they're, the developers paying parkland acquisition, but at a lot less of a rate. They're not paying anything for park improvements.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and in a way, they're, they're, and, and this is not developers, this is when you pull a building permit. Lisa and I just looked at a, a permit today, and do you remember what the total was? It was that, that was like $7,000, which included the building permit expense plus the current impact fees.
Mm-hmm.
So, $7,000 to buy a house.
But aren't some of those fees going for park improvements also?
Nope. Nope. We, we do not have a park improvement fee.
So where do the park funds come from?
We, we have, we have the, what's called a pay in lieu of. And so, so we, we've used those fees.
So some developers pay in lieu of?
Yeah.
Right.
Got it.
Yeah, so but it isn't, it isn't.
Right, right, okay.
It isn't a separate park improvement fund.
Okay, I mean, I'm aware of all these funds.
Yeah.
But I guess I've forgotten how they got collected.
And we have used it for capital, but, but this would strictly be one for acquisition and one for improvements.
Got it, got it. Because I knew there were park funds coming in.
Yep.
And being used, and I just need a little refresher there. Thank you.
That goes, that money always goes into the park fund. It's a segregated fund.
So is this a suggested amount?
Well, right now, it is, but I, this is just the first draft of this, of this document. This is just to get it in front of the park board and the village board to look at, just show you that we're working on this.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll come back with a refined version of this, Laura working with Mike Slavney. And then, in the meantime, we'll try to come up with a, a survey of what other communities are charging to see where, where we should land on this. So the board, the park board can have a recommendation on those two things. The village board's going to have to make a recommendation on the entire table.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just, in essence, this is a doubling of the fee.
Yep.
So I sometimes wonder how that will affect the market, but you're going to do a survey. So we'll, we'll have that information to work with.
And the thing that we have, we just got to remember, we have a, we have a, a higher sewer connection fee, which is not on this table than other communities, because we have our own treatment plant. Because a lot of the communities we're going to survey that are in the Madison Metropolitan Sewers District, which have a lot less expensive sewer connection fee.
Are these, and I'm asking the park board here, the, the, these numbers, weren't these the numbers that were in the, the parks, the big packet of, or comprehensive plan or whatever? So like, these numbers were arrived at via a kind of complicated method, I thought, that I remember reading that packet, and like, I, I don't know how we'd come back and shave it off unless we shaved across the board, but then, you know, we're not getting enough to maintain the parkland. Would that mean, isn't that kind of the way it works? Like, we, you know, we did, like, the, the park board has that, I forget the name, what's it, it comprehends their own.
Park and Rec Plan.
That's it, the Park and Rec Plan, which basically projected these impact fees as being what we needed to maintain the, the quality of life of parks that we have in Oregon now. And if we look at the overall picture and decide that this particular number is too high, then we're taking a hit, and our parks may not be as nice in the future. I mean, right? Isn't that, I mean, these weren't numbers that we kind of pulled out of the air. There's, there's, you know, a formula behind this, so just saying we should keep that in mind. These aren't that malleable.
Yeah, we'll have to weigh all that when we get our survey results back, you know, so.
Because Mike, one thought I had was that, you know, the growth of, the Oregon's projected growth, I mean, that's based on current numbers. I mean, does, do these fees affect, I mean, they must affect the desirability of developers to come in here and build houses. So are they coming here because we have lower, it's, it's less expensive to develop here? And if we raise them, will we then maybe not see the growth that we're planning on? Is that...
Yeah, that's, that's the issue we have to look at. That survey will help sort that out. See where, and we'll have to decide as a board what we think the market can bear, basically.
There's a piece, too, that we're not really discussing right now, which is the, the effort and the money that we've put into our school system. And I continue to hear people moving here simply because of the school system and taking whatever rental they can find until they can build a home or buy a home. So we're doing things outside of fee structure that are drawing people into this community, that make people want to be a part of Oregon. And to me, to my way of thinking, especially knowing now that the suggested fees put us in the mid, middle of the pack, I almost, I almost think that it would just simply allow us to recoup what's needed for the growth of the community. And I don't think it would impact at all people's determinations to move here. That's my personal opinion and anecdotal information from, from people I've talked to and why they've moved here.
Yeah, I've heard that, too, Jeff.
Which, which opens up another problem, and we've talked about this a little bit with the Affordable Housing Committee, and that is that we're continuing to, to build on the upper end of housing, and we're, kind of the gap, the affordable housing gap is getting larger and larger, because the houses that are coming in and are being built here are, are not in that 250 to 350 market, and people aren't moving out of the homes that would be in the 250 to 350 market. So we're going to have to continue to think about that as a board, too. How do we attract developers that are going to target the workforce housing folks that make up the core of a community?
Yeah, and there's actually in the needs assessment, yeah, on page 13, affect on affordable housing, that it had to be analyzed. And it, it, or the nice table. I, I'm not saying that you should not adopt these fees. I'm not saying that the parks don't need the money. I, I just think we just got to make sure we're not pricing ourselves out of the market, that's all. Because, and, and I know developers, they, they, this is the first thing they complain about, about, are, are fees like this.
Yeah.
But I just want the board and the park board to have all the information in front of you, and then obviously it becomes your decision.
What else is there for them to complain about? What else is there for them to complain about?
Well, and have you, have you ever had a developer not complain about something?
You know, it's funny, the first thing during the recession, they, they talked about was, were the fees. We got rid of the fees. And then we talked about it.
Yeah. So when you talk about work, workforce housing, that is one of the first things that's going to come up.
Yeah.
Is, is a community's willingness to waive the developer fees to attract workforce housing projects, so. So I, without muddying the water too much, there definitely, if you're going to build an affordable house, a 250, 350 house, every little bit helps, and, and that's going to come up.
I think it's complicated waiving impact fees and sewer connection fees for some of people, so that's another, another issue.
I just have a clarification. So if we were to entertain another Jefferson Crossing project, light project, under the new fee structure, the new additional fees would be $150,000 or $160,000 more than what that project cost. Is that right?
Unless that loophole is in effect.
Well, so, under the, the current framework, we were unable to capture any fees, because there was no land division involved.
Right.
And the only mechanism we have now to cap, capture funds for land acquisition is through the subdivision process. And, and we don't have a park improvement fee. So if this new fee is adopted as a condition of issuing the building permit for that 60-unit building, they would have had to pay the impact fee on a per-unit basis. Now, to the question of affordability, that was a TIF-funded project, and so the village would have presumably looked at additional TIF funding to help keep the cost of the project at an affordable level from both the developer's standpoint and, you know, when we, when we start looking at other strategies to address affordability, you know, that, that kind of tool is going to have to be evaluated. So if we had on that project required the developer to pay $150,000 in fees, that would have been an additional cost that we would have had to figure out how to deal with financially to make that project happen, which would have affected our TIF analysis.
So what you're saying is the difference between a Jefferson Crossing project that just finished and a Jefferson Crossing project that could happen in the spring, for instance, it's a $300,000 swing. Because it's a difference between zero and 5,500.
No, no, they, they still, no, Tim, they still paid.
Oh, they did. They still paid the other things outside of...
What they didn't pay was the, was anything to do with, with parks.
Okay.
They still paid.
Okay. You just said any fee.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Any park fee.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. All right. Thank you.
Other questions or comments over here? Or over here, anyone? So Mike, on item six, you're not wanting action.
I just had on there in case you want.
Yeah.
I think, I think the idea is that once we have the revised document, I'll, I'll put it on the park board agenda and have you look at it again, and then have it as a recommendation come to the board then for consideration. And, and does the board want us to do that survey, or do you think?
Yes.
Yeah. People nod their heads.
I would actually think, you know, this is the first time in five years that this has come up that I recall, unless you recall something else, and then you can let me know. But I would think we'd want to have a tickler on these kinds of things periodically so that the gap doesn't get $3,000 between us and other communities, but we can make incremental adjustments.
Yeah. It, it was on the due list, we never got to, to that part of the list.
And I'm just wondering about other, and I, and I get, I get that. I'm not trying to be critical at all.
Oh, you're not, I'm not taking it off, no. Yeah, actually, I think, I think Laura says, every, you should look at it every five years, for sure.
And the UW extension, I think, tracks Dane County impact fees, so you may want to check there.
Oh, thank you.
The one thing I would, I think we have to bear in mind when we're looking at what other communities do, just looking at our own experience, we're looking at making adjustments to impact fees, in some cases, in response to things that are happening, like park work projects that we have coming up, like a new library. And so, you know, we, I think we need to look at kind of what communities do over time and, and not assume that just because a community today is doing something that that means that's what they're going to be doing five years from now.
Right. Well, I mean, when we did the, the water impact fee in 2000, whenever it was, we were one of the few communities in Dane County that was thinking.
Doing it.
Yeah, so I, I do it, yeah. Now, now I'm sure everyone's doing that in Dane County.
My impression is that the village is not having any trouble attracting development interest at, at this point.
Yeah. I, again, I'm not, I just want both boards to have the information in front of them and make a decision on it. I get, because Jerry's point is that because we have been increasing it, it's, it's, it's a challenge.
Okay, anything else on this item? Okay, that takes us to item seven. Discuss the village attorney regarding sponsorship policy and sponsorship agreement, and there is possible action by the park board, so. You're on again, Laura.
Thank you. So this, this issue of park sponsorship and naming right opportunities in, in J.C. Park West or elsewhere in the park system raises some novel and difficult First Amendment questions that I discuss in a memo that hopefully you may have before you. The, I guess to borrow Matt's phrase, the key takeaway from that memo is that the, the village should have a sponsorship and naming rights policy to provide the best defense against First Amendment claims by rejected sponsors. So the thought here is that the, the village should have some control, and there should be some approval process to vet sponsors whose names or messages will adorn village assets like walkways or athletic fields, or benches, or the like. So I have prepared a draft model, taken, or, or, you know, open for discussion sponsorship policy. And in terms of structure, at a very high level, one of the things we're trying to accomplish here is to characterize sponsorship recognition as government speech, and in that way, give the village the greatest ability to control sponsorship recognition. So the first part of the policy kind of divides, starts with some high, high-level policy statements on what the village's hopes to accomplish by seeking sponsorships from nonprofits, individuals, and businesses, and then divides sponsorship recognition into two types, off-site, and there's a laundry list of, that's going to be anything from a letter to a recognition board in this building, or recognition on your website. And then the policy also divides, or identifies some onsite recognition, and that's really where I, I would suspect the park board is going with this, this initiative, because I suspect that's, that most sponsors are interested in obtaining some recognition in exchange for making a donation to a capital improvements fund for J.C. Park West. So the policy gives the village administrator, just, this is just a starting point, gives the village administrator some, some discretion to, in conjunction with park staff, to identify a list of sponsorship opportunities. And Mike has just handed me a list of, of, of what we're talking about. These, these are a very nice way to identify some, some assets that could be offered for sponsorship at price points that you have obtained from your, your, your sources.
Our sources.
Yeah.
Ourselves.
And the...
The dark board.
The, this policy, again, as a starting point, gives, for gifts, $10,000 or under, the village administrator would have authority to, to approve those according to the guidelines set forth in this policy. Gifts greater than $10,000 would go to the park board for approval. And what you're basically deciding is whether to accept the sponsor and what sort of recognition to give the sponsor, to the extent you don't have a itemized list. And all naming rights have to be approved by the park board. And then there are some guidelines there that kind of differ from what I'm seeing here. But one thought is that a lot of, what a lot of municipalities do is make the naming right the, the highest price point on your... right the, the highest price point on your list of sponsorship opportunities, that in order to obtain a naming right, you have to contribute 60% or more to the cost of the facility or $100,000 or some other threshold number, whichever is greater. So obviously embedded in this sponsorship policy are a lot of, you know, policy decisions for, for the park board and the village board to make in terms of dealing with this issue of the, of this so-called like undesirable sponsor and how to, decisions about the effect of sponsorship on the park visuals, basically is, is the concern that, that we're monetizing or commercializing your park space too much, what do you want to do here? So the policy is a starting point and, but also an important piece of defending against claims by rejected sponsors. So there's lots to talk about there for, for you.
Yeah, my overall comment was that, is that I, I think the village administrator should not be in, it's, I'm almost going to be like getting involved in setting policy. I think things should go to the park board and then go to the village board for approval. That's just kind of the old-fashioned way of doing things, so. But I appreciate this, this is a starting point.
Okay. That's easy to change.
But I think, can you...
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So one of the things that I talked to Steve about this afternoon, if you look on page two of page 12, 5.3, you know, we were saying in here that would not be eligible would be alcohol, tobacco, firearms, pornography. And, you know, that, the alcohol is the one that raises an interesting question if somebody like, well, I was just going to say, the main tap wanted to do it, you know, they, under this, they would not be able to sponsor it. So that's a, that's a big policy decision for the park board and the village board to talk about as far as this policy, so.
Anybody want to start there?
What, what number was that again?
Section, on page two, top of page two, 5.3.
5.3 is the section.
5.1.
No, I think the spirit in terms of not promoting vices, not advertising vices in the public right of way, I get the spirit. I was actually going to include drugs and then I thought, well, what if Walgreens wants to, you know, I'm not necessarily opposed to Walgreens, the brand, in a public right of way, but I wouldn't want Viagra field on, on the baseball diamonds. I, that's just not the message that I want to be sent when kids are going to be playing baseball. But how do you tease those two out? You know, I'm definitely in favor of the main tap being a sponsor, but I wouldn't want, you know, Jack Daniels Ball Diamond per se. How do you tease those two out?
It's very difficult.
That's, that's why Matt and Laura brought this up, because we were ready, we were ready to go out, start collecting money and they went, whoa, wait a second, you just can't do that. You have to come up with some guidelines because you can't, you can't sit here as an individual or even as a board and go, no, no, we're going to accept that but not accept that without having some, without having a policy in place.
Jeff, even to your point, I see this in NASCAR, there's, you may not have Viagra, but you have the parent company. So all of a sudden the parent company comes up. So in that particular sport, they don't allow any opposing oil manufacturers or gasoline, but so then Pennzoil is still in there, but it's not the oil. So then you get into, so, and that's somewhat probably comparable to main tap. Main tap is good, but Pabst isn't, you know, so, well, they serve Pabst there, so does that make them bad, you know, and that's... But I, also I see in here, it's just, and I'm certainly welcome if you've got any input is that any kind of objectionable thing, you know, I may view something objectionable and Jeff doesn't, you know. Maybe I don't like bike riding, but Jeff does, so how is that viewed objectionable? Now, maybe I don't choose to oppose it, you know, it's perfectly fine, but what, what could be, could be the limits.
And maybe it's not so much the policy as the application of the policy. And in fact, we have a policy that guides the decision-making, but it doesn't necessarily inform the decision-making. If we try to make a policy that's so tight that it only allows the things that we want, on the surface, it doesn't necessarily reflect the next board that's going to come in over the next two or three years. So maybe it's the, maybe the wrong way to approach this is to try to tighten it down so much that it, that it informs our decision-making, but to use it as a loose structure that guides the decision-making.
And that's what the impression I got is that they had, she had a form put together and that was be a form that'd be submitted to, in that particular case, the administration, it sounds like, push it back in the park board. And so then we review it and so that governing body that's in place at the time can make the determination, the next board that comes through, I don't know, did they review it or...
I guess the, I mean, one, one thought is, you know, if it's, if it's Jack Daniels and they want to make a contribution, you can say, fine, but we've decided to recognize your contribution in the form of a thank you letter and not allow you to put your name on the left-field fence.
All right, question. I'm kind of just going on the assumption that we're not going to serve alcohol at the concession stand at JC Park?
That would be correct.
Okay. So that helps in determining this. And I totally forgot my next question. It was sort of related. Oh, I know what it was. So you have this, you know, you've put thought into this, other communities must have done this before. You know, what, what have they done?
Well, it's all over the map, as you can imagine, so. And really this comes up, I, I told Mike this, that there are, there are certain groups that are trying to be provocative. And so they are, you know, literally trying to make a name for themselves by a sponsorship deal. And so there are, and you see this most often in, you know, big urban centers. So for example, Los Angeles decided, we're not doing this because it's too, it's too hard to do. And we're getting bombarded with controversy. So they just said, we're, you know, we're kind of getting out of that sponsorship and advertising. It comes up in advertising too on, in metro stations or on the sides of buses. So some cities have, Washington has a policy and they, you know, the, Matt can speak to this, but it's, the key is to be viewpoint neutral in your policies. And they've gotten sued, they're getting sued all the time, and they just, you know, they do their best to defend these claims in court and say, we have a policy, it's rationally related to the decision-making by the board and try to defend it in court.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm not an expert on, Laura knows a lot more than, about this than I, than I do, but I do know that the First Amendment is a challenging, challenging area to work to deal with. And so I think the message that I got from Laura talking about this is there isn't a perfect solution to this. There is doing the best we can do to put a policy in place that will give you the opportunity to defend your determinations. So you're going to have to have something that's somewhat concrete, right? In perspective guidelines of some kind. That are to the extent possible content neutral. And, and then we hope we get lucky. I mean, as I see it, we hope that, you know, we don't have one of those unfortunate sponsorship issues come along where we say no and then we end up in litigation and our insurance company has to cover us and, and then we have to rethink the whole business. So, you know, and there's a good chance that we'll get lucky. I mean, we're not Los Angeles or Milwaukee or Madison, but you never know. So this is, this is kind of being proactive to do the best we can do. And so I think you need to look at what Laura's put together and try and just do the best you can do, put some guidelines down that you think are appropriate with her help. And, because the alternative is to say, well, there's two other alternatives. One is to just free-for-all, not a great idea. And the other is to...
Yeah, that's the only place where there is consensus, is having no policy is not correct.
That is not a good idea. And then the other is to say, it's too scary, we're not going to do it. And then you lose the opportunity to monetize these assets. And some communities have said, we're not going to do it because it's, it's a cost-benefit analysis, right? Well, we can make this much and it's going to cost us this much to deal with all the headaches and the litigation. Are we going to make more or are we going to end up, is it a net gain or a net loss? I think here that we can probably set this up so it'd be a net gain for this community.
Can I ask you about having assets named forever? How does that, like, I'm thinking of a scoreboard, for instance, when it breaks or it needs to be replaced, like, how does that, does it, is it forever really mean the life of the asset or...
Yes, exactly. That's what it means.
Forever plus maintenance, can we add that? Can that be a thing?
If you buy the forever rights, you got to maintain whatever it is. Forever plus light bulb.
I was telling Lisa earlier that, you know, the Bucks just got, the Bucks Arena, the new one in Milwaukee, just got their sponsorship a couple of weeks ago and I think it's for 25 years, so even that's not permanent.
Right. So it's just, I mean, I just think of other instances that I know of where something has been named and dedicated to an organization and then it doesn't work anymore or they want to remodel it and then it's like, can we? Because they bought this right.
Yeah. One of the items in the policy is, the policy advocates the use of a sponsorship agreement that has a termination right. So if the village determines that this is, there's something stale about the asset or the sponsorship, it can terminate the, the sponsorship, so.
Did it? I didn't, I'm sorry, I must start where it, we could terminate for non-objectionable reasons.
You can terminate when the, right, the sponsorship agreement is limited by a specific time or the life of the asset.
Okay.
Or if, you know, the, the hypothetical that I, let's say, let's say you had a, a field and it was sponsored by Harvey Weinstein and that, I mean, a year ago it was sponsored by him. And you decided as a board that you, you wanted to revoke that naming right and this agreement would give you the right to do that.
Not without a lot of consternation, however. UW is going through that right now or just made their decision on some buildings.
Right, I mean, it's...
And it's, it has been a very expensive process, which costs likely way more than the benefit is ever offered.
Well, and that's where this cost-benefit analysis has to come into play.
I think that's one of the reasons that I, I just don't like a forever sponsorship. There's a lot of reasons.
Yeah.
Things change over time.
Yeah, I'm with you there. It just compounds over time. The further from the decision you get.
And even...
It just compounds over time.
Corporations, from a corporation's perspective, I don't think that, if, if you give them $10,000 sponsorship for forever, then what am I going to make a dollar, a dollar a year for 10,000 years, like as a corporation, you know? Because corporations think in those buckets, so they're more likely to think X amount of dollars over five years than they are to think X amount of dollars over the life or the value of this property.
I agree, I agree. I mean, just tying it to a depreciable period can be publicly acceptable.
Yeah.
You know, a building longer period of time, whereas a depreciable asset, much shorter, three years, five years, seven years.
However long you feel the last.
Let me just ask a question. So we've got, on the one hand, a group of folks who are ready to go out and sell sponsorship opportunities, right? And you've got a list of things here, and then we've got a policy development process. My question is, how do we bring those two things together? What does that timeline look like and how do we make sure that this list is consistent with this policy? What do you think, Laura?
Well, I think the, I think the two boards have to act and act quickly before you really go out and start soliciting.
And would we want the value of, of the sponsorship to at least cover the, the maintenance or the initial cost of whatever it is they're sponsoring? I, I guess this question is for you, Judy, like these numbers, like for two softball or baseball fields, does that, is that what it costs, $5,000 a year to maintain?
It's going to be more than that.
So may, maybe we want to look at making the price...
This is just, this is just, I think, we were just using this for an example.
Sure.
This isn't our, we just want, and forever, I, I don't like that idea either, but we were just using this for some idea so that we could have a talking points and, and make it happen.
Okay, okay.
I think it would be good sooner than later to adopt the policy and that, I think that's something we can do pretty quickly, that the park board could recommend one to the village board and then we could approve that.
We would like to break ground in, in spring, so we got to get moving on this. So I'm sitting here going, come on, come on, so.
Is there a possibility you could get from these, these potential companies to offer what do they want and what do you not? I'm involved in another capital campaign and that's part of it is that they want to be very, very definitive of what they're going to offer, you know, so the, in that particular case, we can actually clearly define what we can make available and then from there go out to those organizations, say what do you want to do? So in a similar case like this, to say, so would you be able to follow some guidelines like this with some kind of contribution or what would you give following these kind of guidelines? Is this something that you'd feel comfortable with doing or not doing?
One person told me 10,000 and, and then some other people said, well, we got to have a million. And I'm going, I think that's kind of a...
Big range, yeah.
You know.
So Judy, what's quickly getting this done in your mind?
Quickly?
To make this work the way you'd like it to.
Well, I guess I'm, I really need to look, I've read this over and read this over. My, my thing that I'm looking at is, okay, we say we don't want, and I, Steve, I'm, I'm not picking on anybody, but you know, if we got main tap and just put the best burger in town, we wouldn't necessarily have to put a beer sign or anything like that.
I've not said I'm opposed to main tap or headquarters or anything, so.
Well, and that's...
Give me time, you're making assumptions there that may be incorrect.
Yes, I should never assume, should I? So anyway, that's what I'm looking at doing in doing things like that, but then I thought there was the freedom of the First Amendment, that we couldn't say what was on the signs. Where are we at with that?
Well, I think you have, what you have to decide is what sort of recognition you're going to get sponsors and what are the, what's the price for that recognition, right? So a lot of municipalities think that allowing logos and phrases commercializes the parks and they don't, they think it detracts from the...
Okay. I like the name.
...beauty and, of the park and, and detracts from the visitor experience and their expectations about what a park should look like. So those are, those are all the policy decisions that you have to make. And so I, I think that might be first on your list to do. Because that, again, the goal, in terms of managing the First Amendment risk, what we're trying to do is, is, the, the rule is that when the government speaks, it can say whatever it's, it wants and without worrying about violating the First Amendment. So what we're trying to do here is make sponsorship recognition, the village speaks. So this is how, what the village is doing to thank you for your contribution to our capital improvement fund for JC Park West. And it's easier to, to have that characterization and that cloak of government speech when you're not adding logos and advertising, when you're not making it advertising.
Okay.
So it sounds like, Laura, the key, you know, the key task for village is to decide, again, how to recognize sponsorship and what that looks like. And then we would say, if you choose to sponsor this, this is what that will, this is what that will look like. Not, oh, you get to now decide what kind of picture you want to put on the outfield wall.
Right.
No, instead, we are going to recognize sponsorship opportunities in this way and in that way, and would you like to participate if we do it that way? So then, do we have examples of what that kind of, what the, is it like a menu of sponsorship opportunity options we can consider as we...
Anything saleable, you can take anything.
Well, I guess what I'm wondering, you know, for example, I mean, would it be, oh, well, we're going to have a plaque somewhere where we list sponsors at different levels. So when someone walks in the park, they're going to see the plaque, your name's going to be there under this level of, that's one way of saying, this is how we're going to do it. And you could be out, main tap could be on the, on the plaque as one of the sponsors. I mean, that's an example, right?
That's an example.
And so I guess the question is, how do we, how these guys come up with the list of what that, things and what that looks like?
Well, one, one easy way to do is look at what other communities are doing. And that's... And that's just a Google search and some, some time. Most people are doing this. So that's one, I guess that's one suggestion.
I think if you go to Granger Hall, you know, there's one major sponsor, it's Granger Hall. But you walk into the lobby, the general population area, and it's AWOL with a platinum, gold, silver, bronze sponsorship. And it is the corporate or the individual name, and it's under the proper level, as opposed to a four by eight sheet of plywood in the right field with the main tap, best burger in town. So two different, if you can define it, if, if you can define it more finitely, as opposed to, well, what do you want? It would, makes it easier for people to make a decision.
Yeah.
And.
Well, it sounds like that's how you manage the First Amendment problem, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
I was going to say, we have examples of that here in the village, because if you go to the ice arena, they have the big signs with the logos and the slogans. And I believe it's Kaiser Park Two, the one closest to the playground, just has one simple sign, and I think it says it's Quick Trip sponsored it back in the day, and that's it, right? So, I mean, here in the village, we have a variety of examples to look at.
It'll be, I think it'll make it easier for people to make a decision if, if we can simply say, at this level, this is what the sponsorship is, as opposed to, well, what do you think?
Yeah.
What do you want to put out there? And, and I think you wander into much less discussionable decisions, if you can make it that simple.
Yeah, it also gives us control over the overall look and feel of the facilities, which ultimately, I mean, that's why, one part of the reason why we're doing this, right?
And then we don't have signs falling down and everything else. I like that, just one place.
Exactly. Or faded, or.
Right, you can still, people do also like to know that they sponsored an item. So you could, you know, when doing this, we could say, we'll put your name on a plaque, I love that idea, simple, you know, everybody's the same, depending on just what level they give at. But also, you could say, if you sponsor the park at this level, you're, you're, that's enough to buy one set of bleachers, or enough to buy a sign, or enough to buy this. And that way, people can say, hey, you know, aren't, we gave enough money to donate a sign. But they don't have to have their name on that sign. They get their name on a plaque, but you could, but that, that way they know their money is going for something specific without having to label it as such.
Yeah.
Well, like the benches in the parks, I mean, they all have their, what do they have, a sign on, Meyer?
Some do.
Some do? So.
Those have been individually, individually donated.
Yeah, but those are memory, yeah.
Yeah, memory of the family members.
And we are selling, what do I want to call them? The path bricks, too.
Brick pavers.
Brick, yeah, brick pavers, thank you, Mike.
So, so are you, are you saying that, for example, if somebody wanted to give us $10,000 for, or let's say $5,000 for a dugout, that the name wouldn't be on the dugout, it would be in, like, the concession building with a wall with all the?
It's one option, for sure, and it makes it a lot easier.
Yeah.
I do like that.
From a First Amendment perspective, from a consistency perspective, from a visual perspective.
There are many, many hospitals, there's hospitals.
Yeah, hospitals do, too.
Still, you can quantify it as, that's a dug.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe that's the dugout level.
Dugout level.
Exactly.
Ballfield level.
Right.
Bleacher seat level.
We can make them cutesy so that, you know.
Maybe the only thing you would have outside then would be that if somebody, this goes back to Ginny Karppler's point, that, you know, renaming the park, you may want to obviously have a park sign, you know?
Sure.
But, but that's a good point. Otherwise, you'd everything in.
Yeah, I like that.
Do we need to worry about slogans and things on the bricks? The pavers?
On the what?
The pavers, yes. Is that something we have to worry about?
Right now, it's all memory, or the people are putting their kids' names on them, the ones I got, so, yeah.
Pump house.
We did the pump house, too, yeah.
So maybe helpful if we just took it for now, and then came back after we've digested it a little bit, and came back and maybe not immediately with a recommendation, but at least a, a feeling of, it looks like this is going to take X amount of time. Maybe we come back in a month.
Yeah.
And say, I think we got it pretty well, I think we got a good first pass. Or we run into a minefield, maybe we tweak it a little bit. Or another board says, you know, we, we need to narrow in on this, but let's just, we'll take it and come back in X amount of time, within a month, maybe, and give you an idea of how long we think it's going to take, and then how quickly we would like to get going. What do you think about that?
I do think we need a policy before we can start selling.
I agree. I totally agree, so.
But if the park board develops or refines, takes the starting point, nails down what would they want, and then bring it here, that we can get a time, you know, maybe a more accurate timeframe of how long it'll take to get that policy in place and.
I can tell you, the school district just put a policy in place around this. They know it's a starting place as well. And they went out and looked for best practices as a starting place. But they're going to take a close look at whatever that we come up with, because you don't want it to be a whole lot different. We're talking about the same facility, type of facilities. They're just across the street from each other, so.
So I could put this on the September 5th park board agenda, and that'd be okay? And then, and then depending how that goes, we could come back on the 17th.
It would be nice to have something so we can go out and catch people, at least from a tax perspective, who have the opportunity to give this year, next year, for instance.
Yeah, I think there's some benefit to getting this done quickly while sports teams are still going, the weather's nice.
Absolutely, where there's interest.
You know, you hit mid-November and the sports teams are pretty much done.
Right.
Except the inside sports, which aren't involved in this, and you could lose enthusiasm, I think, until spring.
Yes.
This way, we have a chance to hit it in the fall, early fall, and again in the spring, and see what happens. I think Mike's schedule would be good, next park board meeting back to us on September 17th, and another joint meeting right then, and see what can work out.
Well, the policy doesn't have to be perfect, to your point. It's going to be revised over time, so.
It's never going to be perfect.
Right, yeah, I would, I would agree. So rather than go back and forth for six months.
Yes.
Just, just draft a policy that you think makes sense, bring it to us so we can approve it, and then we can at least get started, right?
Yeah, and we'd invite Laura to that park board meeting, too, right? If she's available? Could be a mistake not to, because it's a lot of legal land mice that walk on here.
I can't make the 5th, but maybe, maybe.
I can make it if Laura can.
Okay.
Are we going to have to do the same thing for the library fundraising? Yeah. I think we're probably going to have to do the same.
The main tap might not be your example, but.
It might be.
It might be.
By the way, they're getting a lot of promotion at this evening's meeting. Are they paying for that?
They deserve it.
They deserve it.
I'm going to send them a bill.
Five mentions, $25 each, right?
Oh, there you go, yeah.
Branding Jeff.
I'll go get a burger after.
Are there, are there more questions or comments on the sponsorship and so on? Are we okay, knowing that we're going to go to the next park board meeting, back to village board, and away we go? Okay, thanks, Laura, appreciate it, it's very helpful.
Yeah, thanks, Laura.
Thank you. Okay, so we need to do item eight.
Thank you.
Have a good night, thank you.
So Amanda, that's back to you.
All right. So at the May 2nd, 2018 park board meeting, Miller moved, seconded by Knutson, to recommend to village board the approval of locating an outdoor cabinet for TDS in Stone Ridge Park, as decided upon a walkthrough of the site with TDS representatives and village staff. The motion carried 6-0. And so I assume that's been done now with the village.
The easement's been prepared and the document's been reviewed and everything.
Said it's, it's a.
Just now needs to be executed.
Okay, so then the, that possible action tonight is a motion to approve the easement as presented for 15-foot by 15-foot wide utility easement and 10-foot wide strip easement for use by TDS in the installation and maintenance of their fiber system within the property known as Stone Ridge Park.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? We've talked about this before.
So did you move it? Jeff?
Did I move it?
Were they, they wanted it right when you first walked into the park?
It's.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just didn't see that, okay.
Anything else, park board on this? Anything over here? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, most secure. So we are at item nine, adjournment of park boards, you want to take care of that, Rich?
Motion for the adjournment?
I'm so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate your ongoing work. You've got a lot more to do.
Steve, you want, this is our last meeting, I want to offer some, thanks to Eva?
Yeah, I was going to do that, thank you. I think you're the first student that, you've done this for three years now, is that right? Or more?
I believe, I believe that's correct.
Yeah, I know, your name came right out, right away when we asked the high school for student representatives, and we appreciate you taking part, and you've obviously been persistent and stayed with us. So I hope that in case you've enjoyed it, and it's been a good learning experience, and maybe you can help recruit somebody to take your place. So thank, thank you very much.
Do you want to share where you're going?
Sure, I'm going to school out in Connecticut at Yale University. And, thank you. Yeah, but I've really enjoyed my time here. I've learned so much, and a lot of the projects that we talked about, you know, three years ago or so, are coming to fruition now. I think about like the Kelstrom Park, that I go by on my way to work every day, and I can see that. So it's been really rewarding, and I have learned so much about how government functions on the local level. So thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Good. And those are lessons you'll continue to appreciate as life goes on, when you learn about how government works, because it's, it's good, good to stay involved.
Yeah, and then you can let me know.
You won't remember it. We actually let you know at the last meeting.
Get Jeff's email and send him some advice, would you?
Okay, I need to embarrass you, though. Where are you going to school in Connecticut?
I said.
Here?
Yale.
Yale, she's going to Yale.
That is so awesome. It's awesome.
There. That's like no small feat, that's good then.
Yeah, good for you, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, so. So we need a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, or adjourned? Thank you.